All right, ready? Okay. All right, I'd like to call this meeting as a Lakota Board of Education to order today, March 11th. Do I have a roll call, Adam?
Mr. D.
Here.
Ms. Bodie. Ms. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Do we have a motion for item 2A, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D. Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Now we have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say we're not sure exactly how long this will take, but we will come back and join open session as soon as we're done with this portion of the meeting. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Thank you.
I forgot where I sit.
Change seats.
We've been gone so long I forgot where I sit.
You remembered.
I did, I did remember.
Oh yeah, we should go.
April.
Twenty third.
I'll plan to go.
Is it a day? It's a day. Not a day, no. It's like eight to be here, I think.
Okay, it is back.
And you're supposed to then, I think.
Mars here. So every time, it's right where my reflex is. And so I was like, am I doing something? It's just, it's backwards.
Which is fine, I'll just suggest.
Yeah. It's like, what am I doing?
I told you. April 23rd. You have to have the military. That night. That night at seven. Okay. Yeah, I can go. Okay.
Oh, really?
It's all Julie's fault. Oh goodness. Did anybody stay? Oh good, they stayed. These poor kids. So sorry.
Yeah.
All right. We all ready?
Yes.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board president's comments. I just want to apologize so much for how long we made you all wait. We did not anticipate that that would take the time that it did, but we still have to do things right. So again, my apologies. Just want to highlight, we have Light Up Lakota coming up at East on Wednesday, March 13th, this Wednesday, from six to 7:30. All of our different buildings will be there with student presentations and performances, and we hope you're able to join us. With that, Dr. Lully?
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the Lakota East Choirs. They received all superiors this weekend at the OMEA competition. They will move on to state and perform and be rated at the end of April. And we actually host the state competition, so lots of people can come and cheer them on for that particular event. We had several athletes in swimming and wrestling from both West and East that placed in the top eight, which means they were, they were on the podium. They didn't win the state championships, but they performed very well and were in the top eight. So we want to congratulate them as well. Our professional development day went very well on March 8th. There were lots of positive comments and responses from staff. We're looking forward to the March 19th professional development day, which is coming up, and making sure that the curriculum and professional development departments have, they have lots of good events, good topics, excuse me, that they're going to be presenting. Spring break officially begins on March 23rd. I know no one is excited about that, so we won't talk about that much longer. But it does begin on March 23rd, so everyone's excited about it. Several junior highs are having their musicals or plays, and this weekend, for sure, Plains is having theirs. So if you want to come out and join, please feel free to do that. Hope Well Junior High is also having an anniversary on Sunday, March 17th, at 1:30. Choirs and bands will be performing, and they'll have some different activities and things to celebrate. I believe it's their 50th.
Fifty.
Year anniversary. So we want to celebrate that with them. And then there's a naturalization ceremony at East on Thursday, where we'll be welcoming several new citizens to the United States. And that's something that's hosted by East every year. And we want to thank Sally Barker for helping do that, planning that, and facilitating that, that great event for us. That concludes, I do want to mention, one thing that was mentioned in the listening session. There's some confusion about the curriculum council proposal. The curriculum committee will start in the fall, and I think there was confusion about the fact that we talked about what the CCAT members' roles would be. We are leaving the CCAT members on for the last year of their term, and then we will be seeking recommendations from the community, recommendations from the board for additional members as people rotate off each time. Because I recommended with the curriculum team that we have a rotating group so that not everybody's new every year. So whoever rotates off, if it's a community member, we might seek recommendations from the Board of Education. We may seek recommendations from principals or whomever for someone to replace them. So I wanted to clear that up. We are having a curriculum council next year. It will begin in August, and there will be CCAT members that finish out their term, and then we'll follow up with additional committee members in some format of nomination or recommendation for that. So I wanted to make sure that we cleared that from the listening session this afternoon. Thank you.
So it was never gone away, it was just repurposed?
Correct.
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 Can I interject something? Ridge also has their play this weekend.
Yes, I couldn't remember who.
Ridge and Plains, I know.
I knew there was another one, this weekend, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, is that it? Mr. Zink?
I wanted to give a shout out to Spark on their latest edition, Crafting a New Education Landscape. They had me actually come to Spark and speak in front of the class, and they recorded. And Addison Stal Smith did a very nice job putting an article together about College Credit Plus and school funding and property taxes and all of that fun stuff. So shout out to Allison and the Spark Group.
Look forward to reading that, thank you. Okay, we have recognitions. Our own Mrs. Casper was honored at the Southwest Regional Ohio School Board Association meeting. She is now in the STAR Award Achieved Credit for the Service and Training portions of that award. So congratulations. And.
I tried to get this off of the agenda during agenda setting. No one would let me.
That is true, she didn't want that on the agenda.
Yeah, I think something that happened while we were there was, I was so excited that everybody was wondering, what's happening? I said, yes, she's on my board.
I have no doubt.
Yeah.
All right, and now our very patient students, we would love to do our school spotlight. And again, our apologies for keeping you here when you, I'm sure, would much rather have been home doing homework.
If you need a note, your homework's going to be late, you can blame us.
The board ate my homework, not at all.
I figure Mrs. Montgomery might have some pull there, too. Well, good evening. The recent school-wide readathon at Yandotte Early Childhood School promoted a love of reading along with a little challenge. For reaching the goal of reading 4,000 minutes as a school, the students will get to duct tape Mr. Litchy to the wall. Woo-hoo. Very exciting. In addition, Yandotte teachers and Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Downs are running an after-school activity where the students are going to perform the Wizard of Oz for their school community. Mrs. McDonald, the school's wonder lab teacher, collaborated with Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Downs and had the students build props for the performance, creating real-life learning opportunities along the way. Over at Plains Junior School, power stands for the character pillars they want to see demonstrated by their students. Power is defined as perseverance, ownership, work ethic, empathy, and respect. These character traits will allow students to be successful not only at Plains, but also in the future as they move into high school and into adulthood. Students can be recognized by any staff member, and once nominated, they, along with their families, are invited to attend a monthly breakfast sponsored by the school's PTO. Students receive a certificate, and the nominating staff members write up the summary of why the students were recognized. The summary is then shared with all of the breakfast attendees. And the bombers have been thunderstruck. That was the call at the conclusion of the Lakota East Boys Basketball Team's victory over Saint X in the sectional tournament. It captures the spirit that has been ignited and added to East by the newly-formed Lakota East Broadcast Team. The team is a partnership between the Spark Journalism classes and the school's new Butler Tech Content Creation classes, and are under the direction of teachers Dean Hume and Craig Bach. The broadcast team has made Thunderhawk Sporting Events available to East fans across the country. Students Colin Coons, Camden Braden, Max Earl, Ben Schneider, Aiden Singer, Reed McClellan, and Owen Chafin have gone above and beyond in building this powerhouse program. And a shameless plug, the East Broadcast Club will also be live streaming Light Up Lakota Wednesday night on their YouTube channel. And finally, from Cherokee Elementary School, please welcome sixth grade students Anna Hutchins, Avery Twiman, and Jeff Godsey as they share more about their Camp Kern experience.
We're checking on our technical difficulties. We will.
Hear music. Was it just me?
Yeah.
We are sixth graders from Cherokee Elementary School, and we're going to share our experiences from Camp Kern. So first, over half of Cherokee sixth graders said they had never been to an overnight camp before, and they did something out of their comfort zone, such as ziplining, rafting, or horseback riding. And they also talked or hung out with someone they didn't really know, and they enjoyed spending time with and learning more about their teachers.
Our teachers gave out a survey representing us, and it was asking about sixth graders' experiences. Here are some of the results. Ninety-four percent of the students said that they would recommend going to another sixth grader. Also, ninety-four percent of the students said they enjoyed spending time outside. Ninety-one percent of the students had a positive experience at Camp Kern. And ninety percent of the students said they will remember their experience at Camp Kern. In addition, seventy-six percent of students said they learned something new. That just shows our experiences and how much they enjoyed it. We have some personal experiences on our survey. Some of the quotes were about the activities, where my favorite memory was going horseback riding for the first time, and my favorite memory was doing survival. Also, my favorite thing was going down the zip lines and having fun. In addition, I loved being on the horses while we were riding at sunset. My favorite memory was ziplining. Also, I loved going down the zip lines, and the hiking was so much fun. I also loved survival. And finally, the best part was ziplining. Those were just showing how much they loved the experience at Camp Kern.
Some more of the personal experiences are about socializing. Like, my favorite thing about Camp Kern was hanging out with my friends. Another student said, I love the ziplining because I got to hang with my friends more and more. Another quote states, my favorite memory was talking to the people at my cabin at night. One student said, I love getting back to the cabin after long days to hang out with my friends. Lastly, my favorite memory was doing survival with my friends that I don't get to see a lot anymore. According to our data, the most popular activity was ziplining and ropes course. Our second most popular was horseback riding, and our third was rafting, along with several other activities that we got to do.
And as you can see from our information, everyone had a very memorable experience, and we hope that this opportunity to attend Camp Kern can continue for future sixth graders.
All right, do we have some questions for these fine representatives from Cherokee?
Did you get much sleep?
Kind of.
Did you eat anything different from what you eat normally?
All the food was good, but.
Great.
When did, oh, I'm sorry, again. When did you go?
It was in September.
Because it looks like really nice, did you have really nice weather?
Yes.
I was a chaperone when my two kids went to Camp Campbell Guard, and one went in March and it rained for three days, and one went in November and it snowed for three days. So this looks much better.
I don't have a question as much as just, thank you for sharing the experience. It's really, really exciting. And I love how you blended the anecdotal stories with the data. And so I guess my question is, if I'm reading the data right, Camp Kern is much more popular than the board is. Is that, am I interpreting that right?
No comment.
Very well done.
They're pleading the fifth.
How do you feel like it changed your class dynamic? Do you feel like different than in fifth grade with how the class gets along and things after this experience?
Yeah, I feel like a lot of people made a lot more friends. And, yeah.
I feel a little bit more connected with nature.
Ah, I love that, okay. Anything else, Anna, that you want to add? Are you good? Okay. I will say, having done that ropes course, I'm impressed that that was everyone's number one thing. Because I, they talk about like your growth, that you have growth when you're at the edge of your comfort zone. The ropes course put me way on the edge of my comfort zone. But I'm glad, glad I did it, and glad you all pushed yourselves and did that as well. That's a great growing opportunity, so congratulations. With that, we'll ask you to join us up front for a photo, if you would be so inclined.
Do they want their teacher principal to picture?
Yeah. Would you, would you guys like to come out? Mr. Paul Field and Mrs. Mike Harmon? All right, thank you again for your patience to all our students and their families who got to join us. We'll now move to board reports, and we'll talk about the business advisory meeting. Do you want to start, Isaac, or do you want?
Actually, the meeting this time around was to set, to review the way we were running the meeting before and new things that we need to add into it before we schedule our meetings. So I think maybe Dr. Lully can give us more highlights on the details.
Sure. One of the things we talked about was participating with Hamilton County Educational Service Center's Business Advisory Committee. And we reached out to them and got their list of their dates when they meet. They also run some subcommittees, so we'll be able to know what those subcommittees are and be able to potentially join some of those as well. They will help us with the compliance piece from the state of Ohio. And we'll be able to make sure that we meet all the requirements of having a business advisory through Hamilton County Educational Service Center and their Business Advisory Committee. Do you want me to talk about what will happen next year? You want to do that, Ms. Schaefer?
How about I'll start, and then you can correct, you can fill in the blanks, we'll say it that way. We talked about doing a one session at East and one at West and inviting our businesses in to be able to see our students and actually see what's happening within our buildings, and having the committee be broader than just the hand-selected group that we've historically had, and allow those meetings to be a two-way street where they're providing us feedback, as well as we're able to showcase some of the things and actually pull in our students so they can. so they can be the ones making the presentation. We also talked about doing a field trip for our committee to Butler Tech's Business Advisory, which has been a broader, more open invitation, and they don't have another meeting until the fall, but when they resume, we'll be able to go and see how that's been working for them, and they usually get pretty good attendance. So we'll see if we can borrow some of their techniques for recruiting individuals to make sure we get wide attendance. And I think, is there anything else that should be added that you two? Adam, do you have anything to?
I don't- I think that pretty well covered it.
All right. So we look forward to continuing to move that forward and making sure we pull everyone in to have robust community engagement with our business community. And then we go to, oh, Butler Tech. We have not had a meeting with Butler Tech since our last board meeting here, but I just did want to point- point out tomorrow is the Butler Tech Board Meeting. We will be doing a tour of the new facility where the advanced manufacturing is going to be in partnership with Miami University, so I look forward to that. And then to let you know that Sunday to Wednesday, a group of us will be going to DC with Butler Tech for their annual legislative conference and advocating on behalf of education at the national level. Community engagement? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think we've got a- well, we- we already had a list of key engagements that we wanted to do. So one of the things we identified was there was a lit- there was a gifted community conversation that happened, what, late fall last year, and we were looking to do another engagement with them. Well, I think there's going to be news potentially coming, and so we're looking to figure out the best way to communicate those changes. And we want to prioritize some of the other engagements that we have still yet to happen. So we've identified that April 4th, we're- 4th? 3rd?
I said April 4th at DPC, too. There's- that's it's 3rd, and I was corrected, so I- we've missed- we both thought it was the 4th, and it is not.
April 3rd, we're having a community conversation for special education.
It's a kind of a follow-up, that we told them we would have a second one.
Yep, and- and so really looking forward to that. And then the next one that we've identified is we really want to focus in on English-language learners, and we wanted to take the time to make sure that we're doing it the right way. Instead of having one big community conversation with a bunch of different languages, we want to identify ways to address each population, and so we're looking to schedule that for the fall to coincide with the beginning of the school year. We think that will also help build engagement within the schools with those incoming families. And so that will probably be a series of smaller conversations at different locations focused in on different languages that those populations have. So excited to build that out in the planning as well, and we'd love to fit more in, but with summer coming, it's- it's a little tough.
Yeah, we tried to look at what we had already decided at the beginning of the year, what we wanted to do this year, and as we looked at the calendar, there's just no days left as we get towards the end of the year with band concerts and sixth grade promotion nights and academic awards. So instead of doing the, like Doug said, the early language or the English-language learner one and throwing everybody together and throwing it together quickly, we decided to wait and do it so that we could have the little groups. It takes a while to get the translators and to figure out where to have the location, so that's why we opted for just the one for the special ed that's the kind of the response to the first one. And then with gifted, we decided that Dr. Lally said that those changes made in gifted could probably be communicated via an email, so. And then we will work over the summer to do a whole plan out for next year.
Yeah, and we had also talked about doing a finance one, but after the videos from that we shared at the last board meeting, we realized that that was- did a pretty good job, so we're going to rely on that and then probably look for that in the fall as well.
Yeah, we- we usually have one in finance, and we pushed it back so many times this year with losing our facilitator, but then Adam didn't want to have to follow the kids, so.
You guys let me off the hook.
We're letting off the hooks for that, so.
All right.
Next, uh, next community engagement meeting will be on April 5th at 11:30 a.m.
And with that, we'll move to the finance committee. I'll just start because I don't want you to have to say the first thing that we talked about. We are very proud to congratulate Adam and his entire team that they had a state auditor- that they won the Auditor of State Award, which again, we will have somebody coming down from the state to discuss that more at the next meeting, but I just want to at least mention it because it was discussed at the meeting.
Thank you.
So congratulations, and his team will be here at the next meeting. So, Nana, kick it over to you. I didn't want you to have to say anything about your own board.
Yeah, we spent a lot- appreciate that, yeah. And we will- we'll bring- yeah, we'll bring the team in, kind of like we did last year, and get everybody recognized that's well-received by all. And we're going to try to maybe step it up a little bit with sheet cake or something, so maybe if anybody wants to come back to the next meeting, we'll share some of that with everyone. But in the finance committee, we spoke a lot about the changes that we've seen with the property tax update and the impacts that had on the November submission of the forecast in relation to where we're at now based on the assumptions. We still do not have- we've- we've received an advance at this point, but we haven't received our final settlements yet, and at that point, we'll know how the split between first and second half is. It's always very complicated when it's not just a tax year that collects in the next year, and then it's fiscal years that are split between a first and second half collection. So we talked about the implications and impacts and kind of where we could see some variance if, you know, it shifted from, right now, we're at fifty-two, forty-eight percent first and second half, and, you know, based on the change, if it changed for more or less, so it could affect our timing, so. Had a lot of good- I can't think if we talked about really anything else. I spent a lot of time talking about that and the numbers and tried to rock everybody to sleep.
Yeah, now, beside that, too, I got an opportunity to meet the entire team. I'm very proud of how you- you're running your team because your openness and ability to let others learn more is another thing that I see in your- your team. That was my first finest committee meeting, and I love it, and thank you for being a good leader.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, we also spoke about the surveys. We've put in surveys within the staff of the treasures office and kind of the way I'm getting the feedback on that and the data and how we're looking at it, and we looped back and met with the entire team to talk about, "Okay, now this is what the data looks like. This is why we're looking at it and how we're looking at it," because it seems like sometimes things can feel like there's a hidden agenda or there's something that we're not discussing, and so I'm hoping that we make it very clear that it kind of is what we've talked about and what we're trying to do, so.
And we talked about, which I know we've had discussions with the county folks already about the impact of where new sales are put in and- and where we're seeing those actually put in versus some of the conversations of where they would be put in and...
Yeah, we've had a- we've had a lot of conversations with the county auditor's office in regards to kind of that reappraisal process, the mass reappraisals, how that impacts us year over year over year, and they- they update the- the tables essentially with the reappraisal when the state issues those. And with the community like ours and the growth that we've been having, kind of tracking the way that it- it appears that some of it's coming across and the implications that it has toward the school. So we're going to continue tracking that and continue the lines of communication with the county and hopefully make sure everybody understands where everybody's coming from on these challenging topics. That's right.
And we also talked about that with some of the- I know there was such concern about the increase in the reappraisal, and depending on where you were relative to the average, I know people have shared with me their tax bill actually went down with Lakota, which was interesting.
Yeah, that's- between- between that and, you know, the townships and the county taking less on the inside millage, us as Lakota, we've seen rollback on not just our outside millage, also our PI fund, as well as we took one mill less on the bond fund. So it- it kind of made the- the picture a little harder to see
Right.
how it resonated on the tax bills.
Yeah, so some had increases and some had decreases, which is interesting.
Yeah. A challenging topic.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Uh, next, finance committee will meet on April 15th, and at that point, we're hoping to have a round one revision of a five-year forecast. So that's on the horizon again.
How interesting your meeting on tax day.
I didn't even think about that, yeah. Fitting, I guess.
All right, board professional development, anything to report?
Just Doug, Isaac, and I did go to the Southwest Region OSBA Conference, which just gives you some legislative updates, some OSBA updates, and just kind of a general, I guess, overall what's going on at OSBA. The executive director was there, and she spoke, and the president of OSBA was there.
And one- one major thing that I learned from there is when Mrs. The CEO-
Kathy McFarlane.
Kathy McFarlane. How she break down the importance of the board and the impact that we have in the education system, the teachers, the students, and everything, and why we should be more positive in reinforcing what we need to see in our- in our schools, because everything boils back down on how we- we interact with each other and- and how it impacts the students. So it was very, very informative and educative.
Yeah, she had a good- good talk. She did a good job.
Yeah, I was really impressed with it, and having this been my first time attending the Southwest Region, it also, I think, provided perspective from across our region of the challenges that we're all facing and the issues that we're all encountering, so I found it really helpful. And again, I was really inspired by- by Dr. McFarlane.
Dr. McFarlane. And we did- we did charge Isaac, since he sits on the executive board, to move it closer, because it's currently a fifty-minute drive to get there, so Isaac's going to work on that, along with there's a Butler Tech rep that's on there, Jim Ditzel's on there, so. Trying to get it moved a little closer. We either go to Warren County up near Lebanon, or we go to the Green County, and they're both about fifty minutes away.
I want to apologize for being unable to attend. My daughter just moved to Chicago. It was her last night at home, so I- I prioritized my last dinner with my family, but I'm sure it was great, and I apologize for missing. Administrative reports, we're going to go to Mr. Passard. Did he leave? Because we took too long.
We thought maybe you left.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Before we get started on the facilities piece, I just want to address one other operational area that falls under my area of responsibility, transportation. I know the board has received a number of emails about the number of cancellations that we continue to have. I just want the- the board to know and the public to know that it's not lost on us that we need to do better, and Dr. Lally and myself are going to meet with the Piedman leadership to talk about current things that are in place and future things that we need to put in place to hold them more accountable, to making sure that they meet the contract needs that they have for us. So that is an ongoing discussion, and it's not something that we take lightly, and we are going to address it. So I wanted to address that first. Any questions about transportation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so I'll move on to the facilities update. At the last meeting, we went over several things, and I had a couple actionable items that I told I would bring back for this meeting. The first I'll cover real briefly is the enrollment forecast. I received some proposals from several groups, and it looked like I'm going to recommend going with a local company called Mercurio and Associates. They do a lot of work with Sycamore School District. So we've had Cropper McKibben do one, we've had through the OCC do one, and they've all been off quite a bit, so maybe the third one is a charm to have a different perspective on things. So I'm going to bring that back with the agreement at the next board meeting for approval, but that was where I'm leaning to going to someone new to do the enrollment forecast for us, based on the information I have. The next piece was to look at the capital planning and capital improvement piece. We have- I have provided a couple documents for you, basically the same information in two different formats. You have the horizontal sheet here that has it broken down by grade band, and we'll put that one to the side, and we'll look at the one that has the- the vertical one with the green on top, and this deals with the funding sources. So look at that one, it's easier to read after I had a conversation with Adam. We thought it'd be easier to look at it by funding source as opposed to by grade band, so what you see here is on the first sheet is what the proposed plan for the capital improvements out of our permanent improvement fund. Our permanent improvement fund is something that we share with technology and curriculum to do, not only capital improvements, but improve our technology and buy curriculum year after year. It's a separate fund out of your general fund, so that's what we have done most of our facility work out of this fund since 2013 when we passed that in the levies. As you look at this green piece, we have approximately $4 million that we're going to request out of the PI fund to support initiatives moving forward. I won't go line by line, but I wanted to highlight one of the board concerns is really getting security cameras in all of our buildings, even the ones that have been designed to be decommissioned if we go through our master facilities plan. So by the end of the summer, all those schools will have the most up-to-date security cameras within their buildings as part of this plan. Another highlight is you'll see some big numbers for Liberty ECS, Van Gordon, and East Main. Those where you see a lot of the roof repairs that are going to be done to keep up with those buildings on the roofing plan that we have. And the last big one you'll see on this front page is down at the very bottom, what we call the service center. That's where we allocate all of our paving projects. It's done through a bid, and we'll have that at the next board meeting, the bids that came back, but we're looking about half of that $1.5 million will be dedicated to district-wide paving and concrete work. So if you look at the total request for the $4 million out of the PI fund, about almost three-quarters of it goes to roofing, paving, and security cameras.
Something else to mention, I'd mentioned in my section that we've seen rollback within the PI fund. So the PI fund, when approved, was approved at two mills, and currently on the Class 1, it's collecting at 1.1 mills, and on Class 2, it's at 1.4. So that's how much it's rolled back from the initial time of approval.
Thank you.
So in years past, we've anywhere between three and three and a half million out of the PI fund is what we typically would request, and we're a little bit higher this year, and there may be opportunity to reduce this as I go further in. But any questions about the request from the PI fund for capital improvements?
Just making sure I'm clear and clarifying, the pavement and the concrete work, that's all on our property, right? It's not connecting to any other facilities or anything.
Correct, yes, allocated- I'll have the breakdown for that as well when we have it approved, but all that work is done on our physical sites. It's bid centrally through the service center, then allocated to the sites that need- need the work.
Great, thank you.
I just noticed we didn't have the West Freshman Roofing that has been an ongoing conversation, but I see that's on the next page for the fiscal stabilization fund.
Yes, yes. So the next page, the blue page, is talking about using the fiscal stabilization fund, and when Adam and I talked about this, we talked about things that would be one-time expenses. And the way we looked at this piece was, if we're going to have a new master facilities plan done, we're looking over the next ten years to be able to get a plan done over the next ten years. That's sort of our mindset. If it's going to be something beyond that, then this may change, but these items will get us through the next ten years of work that needs to be done in these major areas for these buildings. So it'll be a one-time ask. If these buildings do get decommissioned, we'll never have to do this work again, so that's why we- we think is more of a- a one-time ask and more appropriate use of the fiscal stabilization fund as a one-time use and not an ongoing support of maintenance going forward, if that makes sense.
Another example, when we was reviewing, we had, like I say, security cameras that was on this. Well, a security camera can be pulled off of one building and put on a new building, so- and that's not a one-time purchase. We're going to keep replacing and keep having those. But anything that's on a building that perhaps would not continue to need a new replacement on that roof, now that would- that would be considered a one-time item.
So for instance, if you go through here, a lot of it is with roofing. So a roof is going to last us anywhere from fifteen to twenty years, depending on the type of roof that we're going to put on. So once we replace the roofs on these buildings or these sections of buildings, our plan is we would have a new master facilities plan by some point in the next ten years, and we won't have to do this work again when it comes up, so it would be really considered a one-time cost. If you look at the high-dollar ones in here, basically Heritage will get all of its roof replaced this- this time. We- we had it broken down in sections. We had seven out of the nine sections due this year. Those could be cheaper for us in the long run just to do the last two sections now and try to come back and do that later. It still needs to be done, whether it's done this year or next year. We get a better economy of scale, we do it all at one time, so we put it all for this year as part of that piece. Shawnee, again, a big part of it is roofing. Woodland, it's not on here right now, but within the next couple of years, it's going to hit our PI fund. There's probably about $600,000 in roofing at Woodland, too. So if you look at Woodland, Shawnee, and Heritage, those are all the same- yeah, Woodley, Shawnee, and Heritage are all the same buildings, all built about the same time, and they're starting to have the same kind of failures, especially around the turrets, those aesthetic turrets that are there. So there's where the money is going in those buildings. Another big one would be the West Freshman Building. We've looking at putting in sump pumps at the basement on the one side where we had the flooding. That should- that should solve that issue. that issue. We have a roof recoding. It's not a replacement. We think the recoding option for us is a better fit. It can get us another 10 to 15 years on that instead of a 30-year replacement roof. So it's a more cost-effective way to do the roof at West Freshman. The next big piece are HVAC upgrades. A lot of those rooms have the old unit vent systems. They no longer make parts for those. When they die, we fabricate our own or try to find parts from other ones. But we're getting to a point where we need to replace entire systems, and we're going to do it with a more cost-effective split, mini-split system, where we have one unit that will support two classrooms at a time and do that. We did the same thing over at Creekside. We would just replicate that over at West Freshman to upgrade the HVAC. And those things have a 12- to 15-year life as well. So those are the big-ticket items that we're looking at. Anything else that I need to hit on here real quick? Adina. Adina's a little bit unique as far as it has roofing issues and a ton of plumbing issues. We had a plumbing issue that we repaired a couple of years ago, and we had the same plumbing issue with the old cast iron sewage pipes that run underneath the buildings and the drainage pipes. The issue with that is when the most cost-effective way is to run basically a liner that creates a new pipe within the old pipe. But what happens, you can't have those extensions that come off it. So all the classroom sinks that run into the, to that drain can no longer be run unless you physically go in and dig up each classroom to rerun a new line. And that gets into multimillion dollars to do that. So our goal is to run the liner, but you will no longer have classroom sinks in those classrooms.
Would we be able to in like one art room or something? It seems like there's certain classrooms.
Yeah, there's certain areas that we will. There's the empty area that we're going to focus on. Of course, the restrooms, we're going to have to have a tie into that. And we'll be specific to try to limit the number of classrooms we have to dig up and replace. If you do that in every classroom, not only are you replacing the pipe, you're replacing the flooring and everything else that goes along with it. So we do have strategic ones that we're looking at as far as keeping water in some areas. You still need water fountains and stuff like that as well. So we'll have that strategically done. But when Adam and I talked about this, this is the, all the one-time costs that we think can get us through over the hump for these buildings until we get our master plan implemented. If we never do a master plan, then we'll have to come back again in 10 years and look at this again. But based on the knowledge we have right now, this is where we stand.
Oh, the CRs that are on the list, is that classroom?
Yes, classroom, yes.
So you mentioned Woodland, we're anticipating. Are there other schools as well that we're anticipating, like big structural, like roofing, like how, and I'm thinking of Hopewell. When we were doing the master facility visits, they highlighted a lot of the leaking problems. Have those been solved, or are we expecting roofing from that as well?
Well, a lot of the roofing, we're going to get repaired at Hopewell Jr. with the fire piece. So we're going to get the whole back part is going to be done.
Hey, silver lining.
Silver lining, yes, yes. But we've replaced a lot of those sections already. They'll be smaller, less comprehensive sections that we have to do at the Hopewells moving forward. We feel pretty good about those roofs. Woodland, we know, just because the other two have been so bad, at Shawnee and Heritage, that is going to have to be done.
Okay.
Any questions about fiscal stabilization one-time expense? The next two are pretty easy. The pink one is we have the OCC grant that we're implementing right now with the excess control pieces that we're doing. And we're also looking at adding additional badge wipes and readers where we've been asked through this process. So we believe we can get another 333,000 or 331,000 out of the safety grant. There could be another potential $250,000 we could take out of the first green sheet and put it into this pink sheet here as part of the grant. The safety cameras, some of that we may be able to pull out and use as grant. We think we might have enough funds, but I didn't want to do that right now. Want to do worst-case scenario. It's always great to use the grant and not use the PI fund if we don't have to. Always spend those grant dollars first because they go away. That's pretty self-explanatory on that one. And the last one is what we call in our deferred future years. For fiscal year '25, we had $11.4 million worth of identified projects and asks from our department. So of the 11.4 million, 3.3 are going to be deferred maintenance. We're not going to be able to do those this fiscal year, and they'll be added to the list for future consideration. So there's a number of things. None of it's really going to, few things are going to be causing major issues moving forward. A lot of it's aesthetics, painting, floor replacement, those type of things that you need to do. But we'll put those in a cycle to get them done moving forward. So this happens every year. Our asks are always way above what our resources are. We go through, work with the building principals, work with the administrators, prioritize what we think needs to be done from a structural, infrastructure standpoint with our expertise, and try to do those things from a building aesthetics and environment standpoint as best we can from year to year. So that is my update on the PI. There's, actually, I know there's a lot of information at once. Review would have questions, want us to consider looking at different things. At some point, if we're going to use that fiscal stabilization fund, the board's going to have to vote to move that into the PI or into the general, however Adam wants to do it. But at some point, you have to agree to do that, and we have to know that you're going to agree to do that to move forward with these projects.
Yeah, something me and Mr. Passard worked a lot on was, you know, when you look at this sheet that has the different color coding in one spot, essentially, the most restricted funding source we have in here is our stabilization fund. Then the second one, the second most restrictive to me would be the grant funding, then PI, and then in a way, you could almost look at the orange column as if these priorities jumped off the page, then this would be general-funded, which is the most flexible of our funds, which is why we would be using that last.
Sure. First of all, would you be able to attach these documents on Board Docs so that our community does have access to those?
Yes. They're on a spreadsheet. They don't translate well on the screen, and you can only see that much.
Yeah.
But it'll be part of the official.
Yeah, I'll add it into the minutes as well, and we'll put it into Board Docs in this section.
That would be helpful. I have a question on, I know in the past, we've talked about the ELP, and how if we did major capital improvements, that that could count towards our expenditure, that we would then get partial credit back in the ELP. Is any of this, would that be appropriate? Is that eligible? Can we not do that until we have a full facilities plan? How does that fall out?
Yes, yes, yes. The way it works is, the board will have to approve a resolution to participate in the ELP program. And part of that would be, is to have your master facility plan approved. Once you're, once you have your master facility plan approved, then you're part of the ELP program. Any project that you do that's considering an improvement to your building that's a million dollars or more, you would be considered to gain credit from that, as long as you're participating in that. But you can't get those credits unless, one, you have an approved master facilities plan, and, two, you pass a resolution to participate in ELP, which we don't have either right now, so.
Several of the, several of the buildings that you see the work done in the blue section are the ones that weren't going to be part of OFCC's plan to renovate.
And it looks like I only see two on here that are over a million dollars anyway of each of the expenditures, so.
Right. Yeah, the overall for all projects added the fiscal stabilization is 3.6.
Yeah. Questions?
For the security grant, if we were to even reply that 250, where are we netting out with the overall, what's left from the security grant?
Can you say that again?
So the security grant funding, so we've got 300, or?
331.
331, and then we're potentially bringing 250 over from the security cameras, right? So where does that net out on the security grant from a funding source? Have we tapped it out completely if we do these?
No, I believe what Mr. Passard was mentioning is it would be 250 in additional funding that we could perhaps get. This was already allocating out currently what we have.
Okay, so this is what we have, so we'd apply for the other 250.
That's correct.
Our, our grant is $2.1 million in total we got approved for. The excess control piece that we're doing right now is going to eat up about $1.3, $1.4 million of that. We know we can add these to it right off the bat. And again, there may be money left over that we can use for the security cameras for those buildings as well. So we want to use up that $2.1 million the best we can.
So we'd still be tapping into that original 2.1 award, not seeking additional?
Correct, correct. So we'll be spending down that $2.1 million, and some of the security cameras, I don't think we can fit all of them into the security grant, but we may be able to fit a good chunk of them or portions of that building. You know, maybe we can get half that building done. There's $25,000 left on it, and it's, if it's an $82,000, we'll reduce that out of the PI fund by 25,000 and put that towards the grant.
And should there be additional safety grants, you would apply for that to cover that as well?
We apply for any grants that we can.
All the grants, apply for all the grants.
Yes.
I have a question, not about this. Can I ask a question about the master facility plan?
Sure.
Where are we? Like, where are we on that? Now, I know we picked the architect firm, but at what point do we get to submit the plan and get the ELP on the books if we're going to do that? I know I'm very anxious, but just wondered where we are.
Well, actually, I meet Wednesday with the architect to finalize, because you guys approved the rankings. Now we have to do the contract. I'm meeting on Wednesday to try to finalize that. We'll bring that back to you as well for approval. And then we can sort of pick up where we left off and see, okay, what do you guys like still? What do you want us to focus on? A lot of it's got to be community engagement again, and get that started back. And it's really, as fast as you want to drive this train, I'll conduct it as far as you want to go. So I don't, I don't mean to be pompous.
Do you need the contract approved before we can develop a timeline?
If I were driving the train, we'd be at the station.
Right. So, you know, I'm, not to be sound arrogant or pompous, but I'm at the mercy of the board to, for you guys to prove and do things. I can provide you with options, ideas, costs, but at some point, you got to say, we want to do X, Y, and Z, get community feedback on X, Y, and Z, and we continue to move forward with that.
So maybe, could I ask of the board or of the chair, maybe when he, after he meets with the architect, Jim, on Wednesday, maybe, and I know we're packed with dates, maybe we could find a date to have it, not just an update at a meeting, but to sit down and have a deep dive into the facilities plan.
A working session.
I think that the board would be anxious to get a timeline from you so that we can see what different options that we follow would net, so that we know when we'll hit the station, depending upon how quickly we're able to move things ahead.
Yeah, I think that would be our first step when I meet with the architect, once we get the agreement. Set up a tentative timeline, then you guys can tell me what you like or dislike, too slow, too fast, just right.
Okay.
From what the experts are saying, from what I learned at Casper Conference, we have a lot to maybe review, because from what I understand, if you get your estimate within a year, you just consider that you have to start all over again, because the, because of inflation and cost of things that are happening right now, we may have to maybe do a deep dive and review more and more on the cost, because I don't think what we have right now is even, is even reliable. We can't rely on that.
Right. And I think if you, we flip back to the last board meeting in December, the last committee meeting we had with this, we had ideas about timelines and costs, and if we wait each year, how much more it would cost. So I could bring that piece back along with an updated timeline for the board to consider and see if that meets your needs, or we need to adjust on a timeline with that. So I think that would be our next step.
I mean, Dr. Lally has brought forward to us different things on class sizes, and basically that we can't address some of those academic needs because we don't have a space in the building. So I think we're all anxious to make sure that we continue to move this forward. So that is certainly our goal, to continue to try to drive this as quickly, as reasonable, and that can still have the best work done. So, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to treasurer's recommendations. We have A, approval of board minutes, B, approval of monthly financial reports, C, adopting the resolution, accepting the amounts and rates, and D, in accordance with board policy, my eyes aren't going to read that, 6320, approval of an invoice for payment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Adam, do you want to talk about what the payment is?
Yep. That, the payment is a invoice that was missed between here and there, between the vendor and us back in November, that then got reissued. And this was Cisco, which we have hundreds of Cisco invoices, it's Cafeteria, that every delivery, every day, sometimes every building has its own. So some, a lot of times, we receive these, and we research it, we look in the invoice number, and we have to clarify with them where it has been paid. This is a situation where they found that it had not been. So every six months, we close these big purchase orders for items of this nature. And because of that, that date is then prior to the purchase order. So it was over by $300.
Oh, gee.
It was like $3,300.
Okay.
But per policy and law, we have to bring that forward. So good catch on the team side. Helps preserve that clean audit.
Exactly.
That's good.
Any further discussion? Adam, will you please call the role?
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. We have superintendent's recommendations, A through D, approval of personnel, approval of a MOU, memorandum of understanding, approval of a field trip, and approved donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's two field trips, but yes.
Yeah. Where are those field trips going to? The field trips?
It's the marching bands.
Marching bands.
Go to West.
Band of America, regionals and super regionals.
Competitions for next year.
Yeah.
One is in Tennessee and one is Missouri.
St. Louis, yeah. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the role.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. All right, we'll move to closing comments. I'll start with Dr. Lally today.
I just want to thank everyone who participated in the staff development and planning that and making sure it went well. We have a tremendous number of talented people in this district and just grateful to be able to work with them this year. So it's really all, other than all the announcements that I made earlier, making sure that people know the good things that are happening in Lakota. So thank you.
Mr. Zink?
Yeah, the, next week, we start our first round of budget hearings with our building administration to start listening to the needs and kind of ideas and requests that they have for the upcoming year. So March is kind of the beginning of the, the top of the slide into fiscal year end, and next thing I know, we'll be in September. So kind of looking forward to that, I suppose. That's all I have at this time.
Mrs. Casper?
Oh, just briefly, the, some of the things we've done, we know that, I don't know if we've had a meeting since the basketball tournaments are over. All of our teams did well. They went pretty far, but now we're done. So it was exciting to see that. It was most exciting to see East beat St. X, but, you know, that was fun. But we went to the choir concert last, one day last week. All the days are running together. Again, always amazed at the talent in our, in our music department. It's crazy good how, how talented they are. So just doing some of those things, we're gearing up for the end of the year, where there's going to be lots of concerts, sixth grade promotions, graduations. So it's that time of the year when everything gets busy. I know, like Dr. Lally said, the plays this weekend, Pi Day is also on Friday. I believe it's here at East.
It is at East, but I think at main campus.
Main campus, yes. And I would like to point out, I know there's always some, some, oh, I can't believe they had the play on the same day as the basketball tournament. We are a huge district, and there are only so many days and a lot of events. So sometimes things are going to overlap, which I know is disappointing, but there's not a whole lot we can do when you're a district this size with so many great things happening. So excited and looking forward to all those things.
Great. Thank you. Would you?
Yeah, just want to shout, give a shout out to all that participated in the good things that are happening in Lakota, part of LE Choir. We are top eight in athletes, the athletes that, is it east or west? The, we have top eight. We can't top eight in a...
In the athletic tournaments?
Athletic tournaments, okay.
They were in the, they were in the top eight.
Yeah. So this has some of the good news that we need to hear. We need to hear a lot of more good news and achievements by our students. And I also want to thank the board, my colleagues, for your cooperations to make sure that we clear the issue of CCAT, because there's misunderstanding out there that that was dropped. But I'm glad that we have highlighted, I mean, cleared that today, and it's a good thing, because we are working together, and we want the community to trust us, transparency and all that is what we need. So I want to appreciate you all for that. That's all I have.
Great.
I'll try to keep it short, because we still have another executive session. But I will say, like, I really appreciate the work that the board's been doing to advance our priorities, especially with the building facilities, master plan that we've been talking about already earlier, what we've done with the superintendent's what we've done with the superintendent's search as well and student performance and staff. I think, just addressing, it's great going last because you guys hit all the highlights, but we're blessed with so many that it's amazing that there's always still more. And so I will call out that last weekend, the, several of our students represented Lakota at the regional Ohio Science and Engineering Fair as a follow-up to the, to the district that we did as well. And we've got several going to state, and it's a fantastic program. And just really excited that we found ways to help support that and would love to help encourage us to figure out how do we support that even more as we look at STEAM and tech as being a priority for our district. So with that, I will hand it over to you.
All right. And just briefly, again, I think everyone, I check off all my things, but just our naturalization ceremony on Thursday, which we look forward to attending. There will be over 100 families there, and we actually have, it's my understanding, a student who will be part of that process. So we're very thankful for that. Just another reminder of Pi Day East, 6:30 to 9:00. And don't forget, light up Lakota on Wednesday at East from 6:00 to 7:30. So with that, do I have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official to consider the purchase of property for public purpose because premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive advantage or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest? Or three, to prepare for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No one want me to read that again, I know. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Thank you.
I wasn't even sure what we're doing in there. And we won't be taking any action.
We will not be taking any action when we come out of our executive session, other than adjournment.
All right.
I'm just blind and I'm deaf.
I know. Should have read it.
What? For what?
Read the code. I think you need to read all the code.
I know everyone's sad to adjourn. My, my computer's on. All right. Everyone's mic's on.
Smart move.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Cota Board of Education today, March 11th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D.